Okay, it looks like it's six o'clock. I want to bring the regular meeting to order. Have the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees regular meeting November ninth, 2023, Town Hall at 6:00 PM. Call to order, roll call please.
Randy.
Here.
Bert.
Here.
Cliff.
Here.
Harold. Dave.
Here.
Number two is report from the Hennessy United Board. Barb?
No Barb.
No Barb, okay. There probably wasn't a meeting because they just got done with the Wine and Chocolate Festival, so they probably didn't have a meeting.
I think they have.
They had a meeting?
Yeah, because my wife went.
Okay. I didn't go, I worked. Did you go?
No. No, I wanted to.
Consider approval of a consent agenda minutes of the October meeting. I was just told that we don't have their... We had a different person taking notes last time, so at this time they're not available. B is approval of the claims as follows. October purchase orders is zero. November purchase orders is thirty-six thousand five thirteen. November RSTF fund is forty-three thousand seven forty ninety-three. Number four, November Library Fund is nine twenty-eight seventy. Number five is November Street and Alley Fund is two thousand two hundred eighty-two fifty. Accept the following reports: Library, Police, Treasurer, and Fire.
Your question is, October purchase orders supposed to be zero?
Can you bring that down? You can't discuss the difference in the document.
Okay.
Do you want to bring it down?
Sure.
If no other comments, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda approval.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Okay, Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Number four, citizens' comments?
Is that for me?
No.
You haven't identified.
Okay. Number five, town administrators' report, purchase any new employees.
We're hiring for... We advertised for a utility billing clerk. We figured that that's where we need to start. We've got Brady working on payroll and AP, so we're going to start with a UD clerk. We've got some pretty good applicants. We're going to start interviewing next week. They are hiring for another police officer. You guys had approved a... They have four full-time, one school resource officer, and then this will be a fifth officer. So you guys had approved that a few months back. So they're still trying to find somebody, but they are trying to make sure that they are certified so that we don't have to send them to school. That's pretty much it. I've been busy trying to... With just me and Shelley in the office, it's been pretty busy, and I've had to do a lot of effort work.
Cliff, I have a question for Tiffany. Tiffany, when you advertise, let's use the clerk position that you just mentioned as an example. When you advertise that, where all do you put that out to the public?
Um, we usually go with the King Fisher paper and then all about Hennessy.
Okay, all right.
And then if we don't, I mean, if we don't get any good applicants, then we'll stretch it out. But that's pretty well... I mean, I will tell you this time that there may even be an applicant in there that I would want as like the AP payroll clerk. So there's some pretty good applicants.
Yeah, I understand. That's all I have, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Number six, other scheduled business. Discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the following: A, discussion with possible action to approve taking over the utility bills at the Hennessy Community Center, FKA, the senior citizen center, approximately eight hundred dollars a month. Susan Henry.
I was told that she was allowed to.
All of the board members.
No, I called the board member, a board member. Harold put it on.
He put it on?
Yeah.
Yeah, Harold told me.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but he said that she was allowed.
Well, that's... So what you got to do here, and let me just... We're learning here, sorry.
Okay, you're fine.
So you would... Discussion with possible action to approve, you know, blah, 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 but you can say present, presented by Susan Henry, and then put Harold's initials by it. Okay.
Okay, so what we are asking for is that senior citizens' meals on wheels and the feeding program at the center, the Hennessy Community Center, is in dire financial trouble. So what we're asking for is if the city, because they own the building, could take the building back and let us, allow us to do the community service of the meals at your mercy. And then when they get the... Occasionally, they rent the building out on the weekends, and that money would return to the city instead of going to the senior center. So you could recoup some of your money back.
Okay.
But if we don't have help with the utilities, we're really at the closing the door stage. And these beautiful ladies, plus people who are getting their meals delivered to them because they can't get out, are really in trouble.
I got a couple of questions because my mother-in-law has run a couple of senior citizens in Keg County.
LaVon's here too. She runs the center.
Hey, LaVon.
Stand up. I'm just a math.
Do you all, do you all get any funding from like Wheat Heart Nutrition or...
Long-term in Enid, we get enough to buy the groceries.
That's where you buy the groceries?
It's for just the groceries.
Okay.
You know, and they are charging everybody coming in?
Yeah. What is the charge?
Seven dollars.
Seven. What's your average attendance?
Average attendance, um, no more than ten a day. Once in a while, it may go a few over, but here lately, well, since the summertime, we haven't had all that many. I've only got four homebound right now. But my dear ladies comes in every day and eats with me.
Yeah. I would... I'm not saying that I'm opposed to this. Please understand that. I would want to check with our town attorney, and let me, let me tell you why. Years ago, every church in Hennessy had their water, they didn't get a water bill. The town provided free water. And the town got deemed on that because they couldn't take taxpayer money to fund an entity. But there's probably a legal way to do it, and I don't even know what the thoughts of the board are, but I know it's our building, and I, I know it needs some updates. Lighting, I mean, the last time I was in there, the lighting was pretty bad. I don't know if anyone's been done with that or not.
We had a fundraiser and replaced a lot of the lights.
Have you?
Yes, yes. I've got a few that has went out since then that they didn't replace because they're still good, but we've got a pretty good lady light system now.
Good.
But just to comment from the, as a person who coming in to look at that, there isn't a lot of people who, that are using the center right now, and that's a pretty big-sized building for the few people that are there. So I recognize that there's not, it's not real well utilized, and that, but that, because that is the building and the size of it is, that's why the electricity bill is running so high. I mean, none of these ladies, for the most part, you know, needed high air conditioning or anything in the summer, so it was still running really high electricity because they have a big, that's a big building, the way that electrical system is set up, or the air conditioning system is heated or set up.
I'm thinking a couple of things, that if the town could do some upgrades on the building and maybe petition of a, an accordion door or something that would petition enough of it off to where you didn't have to heat all of that and cool all of it, because it is a large building. And it's a good building. I mean, it's a very nice building. So I... Can you all hold off till we can do some checking?
Sure.
I mean, are we in...
We've been sliding through so far.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I got a question for Mr. Vaughn, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn, ma'am, are you a... What's the status of your utility bills right now? Are you current with your utility bills? Or are you getting ready to fall behind on that? Or you're all good there?
I pay them as soon as we get them, and so far, I've been able to do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I have.
I want to, just a question for the board. Being in your building, the building itself, like you said, Bert, is, needs some, maybe some other work, maintenance work, but it also, it's just a building that is not very, it's very dated inside. So when you want to try to advertise to people to come in and do a wedding ceremony or a, you know, a dinner there or something, it's not very appealing because it's just, it's just dated. So would the, would we have to come back to the board to ask if we could get permission to update it?
Well, here, I'm just going to throw out there what I'm thinking, and believe me, this is just me, okay? I would like to get ahold of our attorney. I know at one time, years ago, going back again, the town was able to contract with the senior citizen to provide services for the elderly, and that worked, but laws change. And if it's going to be a building the town could rent out for events, because even though we've got several, I think there's still a need, and I wouldn't be opposed to seeing where we would be as far as the town doing some upgrades and getting a little more efficient and maybe helping with utilities, and then the town could recoup, as you said, some of that with rental one, things of that nature. I don't, I don't know if you guys think that's feasible idea or not.
It's a service I would hate to see go away.
Yeah. Totally agree with you, Bert. Another thing, another point here that I'm thinking about is, we're losing, or we're going to get ready to lose, we're getting ready to lose, let me say it that way, the Cow Palace, am I right or am I wrong? Well, no, I think you're right. It sounds like you're right. Yeah, the, it's going to have, it's got, what, Health Board issues? I think so. Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is, in my mind, I would hate to see that facility go completely away and us not pay any attention to what Ms. LaVon and Susan and Ms. Vogt are saying here tonight. I agree with the legal review, of course. Yeah, and with, with us owning the building, that paying utilities may not be an issue. I would, I would just really want to make sure it's done correctly so that we don't get illegal. You don't need a legal problem, neither do I.
When did the town become owners? I've forgotten all about that. Has it been a long time?
Three years ago.
How many?
I thought it'd been longer. Has it just been about three?
When did the town become owners of the center?
It's been longer than three years.
I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, I don't either. I'd say it's been the last three to five.
Yeah, I think around five years. I think is about the time that I took it over.
And I'd like for us to even check in to see if there's any kind of... It may be, it may be far out there to even think about, but any kind of grant money to help get it more energy efficient.
Because that's what I need.
New air conditioning, heating systems, and, because I don't know when that was replaced, and I'm, I'm even sitting here thinking a little bit about the safety of the heating system and things.
I've had two of the air conditioners replaced, and there's one that hasn't been replaced.
And we were thinking, because it's a senior feeding service that may be coming to you that we could maybe, we don't know what to do. So we got, you know, you guys, Tiffany's really good with grants and being a city building. We were hoping and very grateful for any solution that you could possibly give us.
Just want to keep it open.
I think, I think a good place to start would be trying to figure out a way to efficiently petition with portable petitions that could be open for events, but where you're not having to heat and cool.
Bert, another thing is, people take it that it's only for the senior citizens.
Yeah, I know.
And it's really community, and they think that the only people that can eat down there are senior citizens, and it's not like that. It's for anybody.
It's for everybody.
So that needs to be publicized more.
Do you all still get commodities that you can use for anything?
No.
No? Wow.
What's, what's the thing you were talking about you get from Enid for food?
Oh, long-term, it's like a, I guess, a government thing.
They, they provide things?
They, yes.
I think that may be.
To senior citizens.
They provide the money she, she orders. They just provide a certain amount of money.
It's kind of like a grant.
Yeah, they, yeah, they send us the money, and that is supposed to be spent for groceries.
Okay.
Usually I spend that plus.
Yeah. Well, I totally agree. I'd hate to see us lose that.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Isn't that one of the problems to the town off and on? They don't build them, but we've been paying the plumber's bill. The plumber to come out and get it fixed and running, and that's, you know, that's adding up quite a bit.
Are you having a lot of ongoing...
I think we've got it under control now. The last time we had him out there, why, he found what the problem had been for years.
For today.
And got it taken care of.
But if you all own the building, the town owns the building, you should be doing it, paying for all that, don't you think? I mean...
That's an ongoing argument.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry.
No, I mean...
Not with you.
But Bert, I never think to ask for help. If I need it done, why, I haven't done.
Yeah, I know. I know, and you all, you all have done very well, but you've done it as well as you have for as long as you have.
When I took it over, it was about one week ago.
I would like to see it, I'd like to see your attendance double and really, you know, because I think a lot of people could use those services that just aren't taking advantage. Yeah. Me too, I think I qualify. You do.
Yeah, I know.
You qualify.
See, while we're on the video, it's seven dollars per meal, and you can come eat your lunch and then play cards all afternoon.
We won't tell you the name of the card game, though.
Well, I know the senior citizens, it's a very important thing that we have in the town of Hennessy, and we need to do some more research, and we will... Thank you for bringing this to us, because I did not know that this was problem stuff. I thought you had a lot, like twenty-five to fifty people a week, I mean, a day, because it's good food. I've had it several times, so...
We did there for a while. We was doing really good there for a while. And sort of all the issues. Uh, with COVID, when we had COVID.
Oh, you're right.
And it's never built back up.
Yes, that's, that's true about a lot of things. But we will do a lot of research on it, too, and we will come to a place where we can hopefully be able to help out. Okay, thank you for bringing that, I appreciate that.
Tiffany, can you, can you explore our options on all that with John and... Thank you.
Okay, thanks again. B, discussion with possible action to approve reworking the CDs with possibility moving them to a different institution for better rates. Yes, ma'am.
Can you, like, table that so that it'll automatically be on the next month's agenda? Did you say you tabled it, or did you just take no action? That way, they know and everyone knows that it will be on next month's agenda. So we don't lose track of that one.
The first one, okay.
The senior citizens.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Okay. Cause they're like, you just continue on, and they're like, yeah.
We're tabling that for the next...
Right. Okay, so we come back next month?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And we'll get more information, we'll see what we can do, and then we'll take it up against next month.
Well, we're very grateful for any consent.
And I wish we could give you an answer right now, but we, we have to do investigating and see what we're able to do by the law.
Yeah, we expected that, but we, thank you very much.
But thank you very, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, too, please. I apologize if I went on too quickly. Okay, thank you.
Now that was CD.
Okay, we'll go back to B.
You're welcome to stop.
Yeah.
We might be more entertaining than whatever.
My mouth gets me in trouble, I know.
Okay. Discussion with possible action to approve reworking the CDs and possibly moving them to a different institution for better rates. I'm going to turn that over to our treasurer, and she, because she's had some investigation on this.
Okay, so I spoke with, I reached out to six different banks, and some of them got back with me, some did not. Based on my opinion, I would recommend that we stay with Interbank, and the reasons for that is, they have a professional work history with the town. If there's something we need or something they need, look on and contact us immediately. If there is an interest rate hike or whatever, she is like on top of it, she's calling it, she's like, hey, we can do this, we can help you, and so I really like that. And they cover on all of the CDs. If we stay with them, they can cover with the insurance a hundred percent of our money. I understood that. Is that, that's how I correctly understood that. David, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. The normal FDIC limit is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and the bank is saying that they will insure one hundred percent of our money. That's what I heard.
Not many of the banks will do a hundred percent. But Interbank says they would cover us a hundred percent.
They always have pledged.
And that was huge.
Yeah. They've pledged other assets, David, to cover us over and above. Yes, sir. They have DFCs. He reconfirmed that today.
Yeah, they will be...
What's the rate for them on that? I'm seeing everybody.
It's competitive with everybody. Yeah, he told me that they would be competitive with every other bank, and, you know, this is a local bank. They give back to our community. And they will have, they'll waive all fees. We spoke with Angel, and we can go two different options. We can go CDs or we can go money market. It's totally up to the board how you decide to go, one way or the other, but he said he would be very competitive with every, the other banks, and when, if we decide to move anything, they will waive any fees for us to do that. Because if you, my understanding, if we take one CD and we move it, but it's not, the term's not up, there's supposed to be a fee, they're willing to waive that. I will tell you, out of the six banks, when I contacted them, one didn't even call me back, respond or anything. One sent me an email with their information. One told me just to get online and print what they wanted, and two of them just said, this is what we, what it is. Angel from Interbank called me and he said, hey, I want to meet with you guys, I want to talk to you about this. He came down today, we met, and he, I mean, he put the personal effort to come to us and to meet with us and talk to us. That's just my personal opinion.
One other thing that he did also, I was with the meeting this morning, and another thing that he put out there is, yes, Interbank is a forty-bank deal, but each bank is like a franchise, and so each bank in the town has to make money or they don't survive. It's just like any other business, like if it's a clothing place or a food place or whatever, it's a business, and they're in the business to make money like others, and if they don't make the money, then they, the people in Hennessy that are employed by them won't have a job.
Sounds like that's what we need to do. I mean, if they're competitive.
If they're competitive, then we can stay local, I think that's our best option.
Absolutely.
And then another thing he also did say, he said, instead of putting the money in the CD, put your money in a money market account. That way, it's not locked in. If you, if something comes up that we need the money, we can move it from the, that account into there as many times as we need to. There's no fee.
How does the money market interest rate compare to the CD rate?
Compared.
It's comparable?
Comparable. I can't say exactly the same, but it's comparable. And so then we can put money into it, take money out, however we need to during any time period, because you never know when something's going to happen, and...
Well, I think with interest rates on the rise, that I think it's good that we at least check into it and try to get the best, best we can for taxpayers' money, so, and that sounds like probably our best option.
But still with the money market, if interest rises, then our interest would rise on it too. If the CD then is locked in at a certain rate for that time period, so...
Yeah, that's what I was going to add. Tiffany is, I remember catching as part of a meeting this morning, he did say that we can even use it, he talked about CDs and he talked about money market funds in a, in a separate fashion, but he also mentioned that we can use those in a combination form, and we could move, depending on the rates and how the rates change, and we could move money back and forth between the CDs and the money market. And I really, really, really liked hearing that after he told us about the, being able to insure all of our, all of our funds at a hundred percent instead of just the normal FDIC stuff, a normal customer would get. Don't they provide us that on a monthly basis, where our accounts are insured and how they're covered? That's what I thought. Sounds good.
So do we have to take action?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
I wasn't sure, since we weren't moving banks.
What we're doing is we're moving the money into things that, into the money market account, so we can...
I make a motion to... I don't know how I'm supposed to word this. I'll make a motion to approve working with Interbank for CDs or money market accounts. I don't know. What, how am I?
I would just say CDs and, and money market accounts.
So I make a motion to approve to work with Interbank with CDs and/or a money market account.
I'll second that. Roll call please.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
C, discussion with possible action to approve holiday bonuses for the employees. I did not bring the, what we did last year, but for how we did Christmas bonuses for the employees. Do you?
We did...
I can't remember. I think we did.
I think it started out at five hundred, and then they got fifty dollars for every year they were employed.
Right, and then part-time people got?
Two.
One fifty?
Was it one fifty?
I think it was one fifty.
One fifty.
One fifty. Plus?
No, we never did.
Part-time not seasonal, but, right, yeah.
I mean, if you guys can think about it, we can have a special meeting, but I know Cliff didn't want to, he wanted to get this.
You get this on the agenda, because the Christmas card is going to be December second.
What, what? What's our financial picture looking like?
Uh, we're still working on that.
Okay. So then we need to maybe table this?
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, we could, that way, because I can get, we had Tammy here two days last week going through. It took us a while to get through July, and Tammy helped us two days. We worked on August, we're almost complete with August, and so we still have to catch up September and October, so...
Could we do that? Yeah, we could have a... Do we do that? Mr. Mayor, I got a question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I, I don't want anybody to think that I'm against these...
I, uh, I don't want anybody to think that I'm against these, these bonuses for the employees. I just wonder how long it's been, uh, I've done some reading on this in, in, in the state laws. Have you guys, Tiffany, I know you got a long history, Bert, I know you've been here forever also, do you remember when a legal review was done on this stuff? Is it, is it possible we had a legal review done on that in the past?
Actually, we did, but I don't remember when, it's, it's based on how you call it, it's an incentive, you know, you can't really say, I mean, you have, it's how it's worded. And so we just kinda copy and paste every year because it was depending on how it was worded.
So, we've already had a legal review, and, yeah, again.
I mean, I can get another one before the next meeting too.
That's not what I'm asking, uh, I just, I just, I guess the word I wanna use is I feel uneasy with it, unless you guys have vetted it out all the way in the past, and, and, uh, this ba, just, I feel uneasy with it just based on my own reading. And, and you guys know that I'm not a lawyer, as long as, uh, John, uh, or whoever his predecessor was, has, has weighed in on this, I'm good with it. I guess that's all I have to say.
Yeah.
I know that.
We also talk, I mean, discuss it with our accountant too, cause the accountant knows a lot of the.
I think they have checked this out with, with the Dallas.
And then, and then they see what other towns are doing too. Okay, I get it, I get that, alright.
Okay, so we need to table this for a special. So, we, we are gonna table the holiday bonuses for employees at this time, we need more information. And we'll have a special meeting. D is discussion of possible action to approve ordinance permitting direct discharge of certain hauls waste directly into the wastewater treatment plant with a separate vote on the emergency plot.
I don't have, I know that was in our email, but I didn't turn it off. I wish, I would've, I'd have brought my laptop or something so I could read that as we discuss.
What is it, what?
The ordinance on the wastewater.
You should have it.
It's in your packet.
Should be.
I even littered him, Bert.
I didn't see that. I'm proud of you.
Wow. Wow.
I stand corrected. It's good you had it labeled something else, I might have.
Mine stretched it out and I put the correction on there.
My fault. Okay, thank you.
Where are these located?
On Cemetery Road, right.
Oh.
Down east side, right, and then on the, yeah, on the east side. How, there's a lot in here that, how are we charging for this?
You mean, proposed in the ordinance, or how, where would we go for?
Well, I see the fee.
And I know, David, you wanted to know what we were charging last month, or last, before.
Yes, ma'am.
It was based on what they, like, if they were billed monthly, it was based on the, the amount of gallons that they guesstimated that they would be disposing of, and those were set done by our former director of public works. And then, I think, like, Hennessy subject, theirs was per dump.
Yeah.
And it was fifty dollars, correct? And so, that was what theirs was, and then they would just call in, or they would just let us know how many loads they did.
Well, we talked at length before on this about doing some kind of key card system and things that I think were gonna incur a lot of capital costs. But, I, I really don't wanna see it just opened up to, I mean, I think the town needs to know who's dumping and when, to keep, I mean, we don't know, somebody could be in there.
Well, and we've had people down there that we were on drilling that were selling.
Right, that's, that's where I'm going with that.
So, you had a lock with the key?
We, we had, you guys had a padlock on it, we, you issued a key.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the only way anybody could get in there, is if they, if the town issued Joe Blow contract or a key.
But we did run into a few issues where somebody would go check in, the person who used it last didn't lock it.
Right.
So, they found somebody just there, so the key was, so I don't know what the answer is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, could we have, I mean, I mean, Eric, do you, you mostly done during business hours, like?
We dump twenty or twenty-four seven. Him and I haul sewers till four-thirty one night, out in Nenacaw. But we dump all night long.
And we, we dump at Nenacaw, we dump at Marlowe, we dump at Maysville, we dump at Wacomis, we dump at Cleo Springs, and they all are, either you leave a ticket, or you call in and tell them what you dumped. And they're, and none of them, all of them are, they go straight to the lagoons. Marlowe, we back right to the lagoon, just blow it off in the lagoon.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we got a key to their lagoons, and we can go after twenty-four seven, and sign the ticket when we leave at the mailbox.
And we have Visei now.
Yeah, Visei.
How, how do their, how do other places' rates compare to, have you seen close, proposed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the reason why we're here today.
Wacomis is fifty dollars a load, Marlowe is in increments of two thousand is twenty-five, zero to two thousand, two to four thousand is fifty, and so on, so. Maysville is three cents a gallon, so it's what, ninety bucks for a three-thousand gallon load, so.
Greenfield?
Greenfield is sixty dollars per thousand.
Yeah.
They're the highest ones that we try to stay away from.
So, that's where we're wanting to be, so.
Well, obviously you do, it would be great revenue for the town, but it would be bad for us. If I came out to your house, Bert, and you called me and said, hey, I need my tank cleaned down, I charge three hundred, and then if I tell you, well, I gotta pay two hundred and fifty bucks to get rid of it, you're gonna throw up fit when I tell you, well, it's gonna cost you five hundred and fifty bucks, cause I can't absorb that two-fifty into that three hundred and make money.
That doesn't work very good.
No.
And I tell you, these rates were, this is exactly how the attorney sent it over, so I had nothing to do with the rate.
Well, that was gonna be, one of my questions is, how did we come, go from fifty, where up to two-fifty?
Did they call other towns?
I don't know what he did, he sent this over to me and I.
Like I said, Greenfield is our highest one, and they're one eighty for three thousand, sixty dollars per thousand, so where he come up with two-fifty is.
Another, another question, you know, I'm glad you guys are here, because one of the things that's bothering me in my mind is there's different size septic tank trucks, there's, you guys run kind of, I don't know, I call them like bobtail trucks, compared to that, compared to the big trucks coming out of Oklahoma City is what I, we're talking about.
We have a fifteen-hundred, two-thousand, and I got two three-thousand gallon trucks.
Okay, but they're not tractor-trailer.
No, no, we don't run transport's where it's a hundred and twenty grams.
They're what a non-trucker calls a bobtail.
Right.
And the frequency we, we would be dumping, like, we dumped four loads today in Wacomis. We're gonna have, with the job that we've got coming up tomorrow, we're probably gonna dump three or four loads in Wacomis. After that, it might be four or five days, and we don't dump nothing. So, it's just hit and miss as far as quantities per day, quantity per month, however you wanna say it.
Yeah, it's never the same.
It's never the same. Some months are a lot better than others.
Well, here's, here's, here's what I think, uh, about, not only Eric and his, his company, but other local companies also or, or close by. I think we ought to treat them kinda like the bank was talking about treating us this morning. Does that make sense to you? They, I heard from the bank this morning that we're, we're one of their favorite customers, and I think that they should be, or, or I'm not just talking Eric's company, I know I can't single out one company and, and brag about that, or try to fool work their way. What I'm saying is, is we, we could have a group of, of, of people in that industry that we might even be able to charge a lower rate, and I wanna talk about that some more when we get down to, uh, RVs. Right now, I know we're on trucks and we need to stay there.
Well, isn't that something that we could check with the attorney, that if it's a local company, can we give them a better?
Give them a break.
I mean, we, we have done that, we have helped the city of Hennessy and not charged, only because we're local, we just go do it and say, hey, don't worry about it, no worries. I mean, not that we do that just because we want to, we do it because, like I said, we're local. But as you call somebody out of Enid, they're gonna charge you a tremendous amount.
Be right, a big check.
Yes.
And we've even made tanks for people that are on a fixed income and not even charge them, and we'll go pay the dump fee out of our pocket, but yet not charge them for their pump out.
Yeah, I'm aware that you guys do that, have done it and do it.
It's just something we try to keep.
I'll say that right in front of everybody, I appreciate it.
Several months ago, we had a citizen here who told us that they thought there were some improprieties with the, the way, the way we were living. And, and I don't, I don't, I don't think they meant on your end, okay, at all, but I guess my concern is, I just wanna make sure that we don't just leave it open.
Right.
For somebody to come along and dump, because.
And not pay it.
And not pay, because it's, that's totally, you know, that's totally illegal, and.
Right.
I, I don't know, my, my thoughts were having a town employee, we've always got someone on call, having a key, and could go meet there and then turn a ticket into town hall or whatever, but if you're dumping at four-thirty in the morning.
I got that, it's gonna be my neck coming, you don't want him to get out at two o'clock in the morning, come unlock the dump.
Why is it not me?
That's where, that's where we was at, was Nenacaw, and we dumped from, we started dumping there at ten, about ten-thirty that night, and we left with our last load at about three-thirty.
We dumped six loads of sewer that night.
Yeah.
See, Bert, again, I'm back to, maybe we need to treat some of these guys special.
Cause that's what.
Even to the point of giving them a key.
Yes.
With Nenacaw, is it's, we call every month and turn in the amount of loads, we keep a tally on what we dump, and we turn them in, so.
Tiffany, I, I got another question about past rates, uh, and, and I don't know where I got this information, I can't remember. I read it somewhere here in the office, I wanna say the big trucks, the big eighteen-weavers coming out of Oklahoma City was two hundred dollars a load, does that ring a bell? No? I read that somewhere. Okay, and, uh, I also thought I read the bobtail trucks, like, like these guys are talking about, was fifty dollars a load.
I think on our rates that we've approved, there is a bulk sewer, and it's by the gallon, and maybe that's where that came from.
That was my next question, was, is, what, what's the possibility of us establishing flat rates? Let's say we charge a company, and I'm not talking about any particular company, I'm talking about a company, uh, what if we charge the company, uh, let's say, uh, a flat rate of twenty-five hundred dollars a month?
We did do some of those like that.
Uh-huh, yeah.
And those were the ones, besides, who's septic, those were the ones that were doing transports, but they would also, they had a key. Like, cause we would bill them and they would pay every month.
Okay, yeah, is that some of the big truck traffic we were getting out of Oklahoma City?
Oklahoma City, Enid, they were oilfield companies.
Oilfield companies?
Yeah.
Okay, sometimes those guys do their own oilfield, clean out of the.
United Airlines.
Okay, I get it, I get it.
We were offering a flat fee, flat monthly fee, but in discussing it, we felt the option of fifty dollars a load was better for us, because, like I said, our business fluctuate, one, one month we're real slow, we might only dump ten times, the next month, we might dump a hundred times, we, we don't know. So, that's the reason why we chose to go with the fifty dollars per load, rather than the fifteen-hundred, two-thousand a month flat fee, whether we dump or not.
So, with the, so with the, the transports and the, the different sizes of trucks, I think we should cap that per load. If, if we go to a lower rate, we should cap that to so many gallons, like the bobtail for three thousand gallons, and then have a, a higher rate for a bigger transport, if the, if that's the case, because I don't think it's fair, if you guys bring in a fifteen-hundred gallon truck to dump, you're gonna pay fifty dollars, they bring in a hundred and twenty barrel.
Right.
And that's, that's not the, exactly. No, and I don't blame you for that, I mean, you, you guys are running the business, so, I, I just, I feel like we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out a, a way to, one, be competitive with the other towns, because I don't think we wanna push people away, or I don't wanna push people away.
I wrote down, I sort of wrote down all the towns that you were saying, so I can always get ahold of them, figure out what their rates are.
And put Fairview down too, cause we don't get Fairview.
Yeah.
And we were told at one time from the DEQ that what a town charges is up to what the town board decides, not necessarily an attorney saying, okay, well, you need to charge these X dollars, it's whatever the town board decides.
And when you started talking about RVs, that, that made it sound like you was gonna make it a public dump, where a motorhome could come in and just dump an RV there if they wanted to, is that what, is that the way I understood it?
Yes.
So, he put it in here to where, because we have a bunch of local people who want to be able to dump their.
Right.
You know, their travel trailer or whatever, and so that's what that was. And speaking of which, I know you said you were gonna bring that up on that rate, I had mentioned after I seen this, cause twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollars, that if they pay a current, I talked to, think Cliff, if they pay a current sewer rate for Hennessy, then we would give them like maybe four or five free dumps a year.
That's where I was gonna go. If, if somebody has a sewer bill, I think, I think the RV and the travel trailer stuff, uh, should be extremely economical for them here in town. If not zero.
Well, I have two houses in town.
Forty-five dumps a year would probably be a, a good, that would make me very happy. I would say, I would lean toward five.
Well, and, and that's fine, I was, well, I was thinking just not unlimited, because then, um.
Maybe just hook up to anybody's RV and come dump for it.
I appreciate the offer of X amount of dumps for free.
Yeah.
But what we're after for my business is convenience.
Right.
It's a pain in the backside to go south and do a pump out in Kingfisher, and have to go all the way to Wacomis and dump, and then come back home. We've done that many, many times in the past, and it's, it's an inconvenience.
And costs gas.
Well, yeah, gas and time, labor.
So, we're gonna have a special meeting, and I could probably have this.
Yeah, we need to.
My, my whole thing, and you guys, I do not want you to think this directed at you, cause it's not. I'm, my whole thing is policing it, and, and I'm assuming that we don't have the peak and, and. We don't have much work.
Right now, you don't.
Their, everything, all their stuff is died off.
Yeah.
And they're farther away now, so they wouldn't.
And we're not gonna be dealing with big transport loads of.
Not right now, you're not, no, now, if the oilfield ever kick back up running this area, good chance, yes.
Then we could revisit it.
Right, that would be your option.
But then, that's where we put the provision in there for the gallon limits.
Exactly, the size, the three thousand.
The size of the limit.
Yeah, your biggest truck's three thousand, yes.
Cause like, like Maysville, theirs is three cents a gallon for, I think it's the first twenty thousand gallons, then it goes to one and a half cents thereafter, per month, on what they do on theirs.
I kinda hate to.
And we, like I said, we do a ticket.
We can't eat or anything.
No.
I mean, and if your truck's half full.
Right, e, e, whatever we dump is what we, on those where we get charged by the amount, we write down what we dump.
Now, with this being set, I don't think we could do that.
And it's gonna be a give and take, because one time, we may only have one septic tank on that truck, and it's only barely a thousand gallons, but the next time, it's gonna be three thousand gallons, we pay the same fifty, seventy-five bucks, whatever we determine.
Yeah, cause there's no, there's no way to.
No, it's gonna be a, it's gonna come out and wash in the end. No, it's going to be a, it's going to come out and wash in the end. I'm not getting up on the top of my truck and doing that. I'm going to pull out bolt in the valve and dump it and get gone.
Yeah. I understand.
But we know pretty well, almost everybody's got a 1,000 gallon tank. The oilfield tanks we do are 3,000, 2,500. We know automatically what we've got on the truck.
So Tiffany, this, this is, this is really technically not a draft. It's, it's a final with the exception of, this came from Mr. Nguyen, right? Okay, so we've already got a legal review done on this. So all we got left to do is set the rates. That's all we got left to do. And we can go file and print this thing out and make it law.
That's why I said we could probably have it by our special meeting that we're going to have in a couple of weeks.
Very good. I'm very happy.
And so, just, just talking about the access thing, just, you know, obviously I've got an oilfield background. So how we police kind of who's in and out of facilities is we'll use different locks. If we find your lock unlocked, you know, we can, we can, we can police that. We know who's, who's lock unlocked it, who left it unlocked. And so...
In that way, the... More or less, there's different pad locks on there.
No, more or...
It's just only got a spot for one pad lock, so...
If we can use a chain or anything like that.
Wacomis was that way until they set up a different dump station. We all had our own separate locks on the gate to get into the lagoons and dump. And then they...
Police it would be put a fence across there and have a lock on the gate.
Yes. And you could set up a camera. That way you could always have...
What about a camera system?
24-hour surveillance of who comes and leaves and who makes a mess and who doesn't.
Yeah.
Because I, we went to Wacomis.
Yeah.
We went to Wacomis and there's been a mess and it's like, that wasn't us, but they have no way of knowing who did it.
Right.
Because there's no camera. And we, we can't afford to lose our dump sites.
So do they have electricity at the...
Not frequently. You know, this is across the...
They have battery surveillance cameras now. The batteries will last 30 to 60 days. And then they're rechargeable, so you have two sets of batteries, so you just alternate.
So I can talk to Karen about that?
Yes. I think it's feasible.
Because do you run into messes? I hadn't thought of that, but...
It's not bad down here. Down here, it's not bad. I mean, they're doing it...
At most of the dump sites we've gone to, at some point in time, we've seen where somebody before us has made a horrendous mess. And then the towns start calling around, hey, did you dump last night?
One thing about like the dump down there is it's only a four-inch line. So you can't pressure up and blow it off. You just got to let it gravity feed. And it's got a 90 in it, so if it plugs up, there's a mess right there. Everywhere else, we blow off into the lagoon. It's through a hose that we hook up to that's tied to a manhole, or the rest of it is back up to the lagoon and you just blow it out. So...
How's our lagoon?
Our lagoon, they're doing good.
No, I mean, how, how low would they dispose it? Is there a hose or...
We use the dump station made up, use a hose and it's gravity, flooded gravity feed.
That's where I was talking about the four, it's only a four-inch line that goes over to the manhole, if I'm not mistaken, on the south side of that. So you've got 50 feet of four-inch line that could plug up. I mean, you...
And if you dump, if we dump in the lagoons, you want to designate a specific spot and kind of line that wall of the lagoon with some really heavy rocks because otherwise it could risk a chance of getting eat out. You don't want that. But that's happened at a few other lagoons. They keep hauling in dirt, which doesn't do any good. It washes right back out. You got to put some big rocks in there where they won't wash out.
Is our lagoon set up to where it'd be feasible for them to get access to even dump directly?
They would have to drive between the two lagoons in the center to get to number one.
We'd place meters to go between the two lagoons.
Years ago, when we dumped down there, there was a manhole right before the lagoon. Was there not?
Yes, there's a manhole right there.
And that's where we...
Or the dragger.
That's where we would dump out, was right there. For that one.
Just inside the gate.
So you had to unlock the gate to get in.
So, so Tiffany, I'm, I'm being a pest here on the ordinance again. I'm in section three, user fee schedule. It's on page three. And I realize that John was, John was given, you know, he was doing the best he could with his working knowledge on this stuff. If you see item A, it says septic tank trucks. So in my mind, I think we need to break that out, you know, based on truck size. The one-size septic tank truck is, is not what we're, is not what we're looking at. We're looking at small trucks, medium trucks and large trucks. And then the second item, item B, he put on their portable toilets. Well, people don't take their portable toilets down there and dump them.
Well, he's probably thinking of like United Rentals.
Uh, maybe, yeah.
Their portable toilet trucks that they go clean out the portable toilets.
Yeah.
That's, those are horrible.
Okay. Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
You get rags.
All kinds of trash in those.
We stay away from them. We don't even, we don't even have any more to rent out. We did and it didn't work, so we got out of those.
I'm just, I'm just looking for, I, I think we need to wordsmith, we need to wordsmith this a little better than what John's got it.
Yes, and that's why I'm going to call these other communities and figure out how they bill and how much they bill for this stuff.
We even, it almost sounded to me like maybe we don't want to let portable toilet companies even dump. Because I know we did have some trouble with our... What was that thing called? The muncher? The muffin muncher. That was actually the brand name, folks. But anyway, I know we did have some trouble because of rags. And maybe if we eliminated the porta potty dumps, we don't have a local porta potty company, do we?
Not local in this town, no. And a little bit of their defense, some of them will say, well, they run, once they go out and clean out the porta potties at the end of the day, they bring it back and they run it through a filter before they put it into their holding tank. Now, take that for what it is. Do they or don't they? Or how much does it filter out? I, I can't tell you that, but that's what they tell us. Now, this one customer that we work for, which it's going to be tomorrow, we'll go help clean out their frac tank. And about the first load, first load and a half is nothing but water, but after that, it's just a thick, soupy, slushing mess. You can't even hardly suck it onto your truck. So...
So it does say that solid in here that prohibited is solid or viscous substances in amounts which will cause obstruction of the flow in the publicly owned trunks, resulting in interference. So I think...
That's the problem.
We, we do to a certain extent. 99% of the time, what we dump is going to be no worse than what citizens from the town dump. Now, we have gone to septic tanks where they have used items that do not break down. And there's just humongous masses of wipes and body wipes and all this in there. And we say, oh, we can't, we can't clean this out because we can't go dump it. So we, we try to police it on our end as much as feasibly possible.
And I'm not worried about you guys. I'm glad that we're here now.
I'm just saying, we try to do our part in keeping the facility not getting blocked out. Now, is that going to say we're not going to suck something up that we didn't see? Absolutely. I found a class ring one time and I didn't know until it was laying right there in the valve, so...
Brian, that's the purpose of the muncher. If they do miss something, should take care of it.
It should drain it up, but if you get too much of it at one time, it's plugged up, right?
Okay, I got it. I get that too.
Well, I hate to do this, but we need to table this again and we'll bring this back up for our special meeting that we're going to have. I want to thank Eric and Roxanne, I meant Austin, sorry. And, and I don't know why I said that. I can't, I apologize.
Go to the line.
I'm old. I'm old, okay? I'm old. And, but, and I appreciate your time because I know you've been waiting on this for a long time. We've been talking about this for nine months to a year. So I want to say thank you for your patience on this and we will get this taken care of as soon as we can. Thank you.
All we ask, thank you.
E, discuss with possible action to approve ordinance requiring the installation of a backflow preventer valve under certain circumstances with a separate vote on the emergency clause. This is on new... Residence.
This would be on new constructions or if they have had two or more reported sanitary sewer backups and filed a claim with the town. We would require them to put one in.
And all new, you said?
Yes.
Well, I, not all new. Residential will be, all commercial, but residential will be if they, their lowest point in the house for the sewer is, what is it? Is lower than the... I don't remember how I just explained it to you. Do you know?
Let me see it.
It's, it's like the lowest sanitary sewer connection in any residence is lower in elevation than the next upstream manhole. So like...
It couldn't be, could it?
Well...
It wouldn't touch, it wouldn't drain.
We've had some goodbye.
They ran up here?
We don't know how it's working, so...
A lot of pressure.
I hope they post a scene on all new construction, just to prevent. You're not that expensive, are they?
I think the four-inch, four-inch jack valve was like 120 bucks, the one I had when I showed it.
That sure saved a lot of damage to the home if they got backed up in sewer. An inch or two inches deep. Can you suck that out, Eric?
We've, we've done that in basements. Yeah.
You'd be amazed at what we've done, Bert. I don't, hey, if people tell me they want trade jobs with me, I would not trade jobs with them.
And so you talked about basement. And if there's sewer down in that basement, then yes, that's going to be lower than a manhole. So they would be required to have one.
No, it wouldn't because it wouldn't work. It wouldn't drain. I mean, I know basements with sewers, I've got one, but the sewer line outside's way lower.
Is the manhole higher or lower?
No.
No.
Where, where my line from his house, it goes like, God, it was 10, 12 feet deep to get into the manhole out there to tie into the main line. So we had a good slope from the house out to the alley.
Some of the slopes are not very good in some portions of the town.
Yeah, we redid that a couple years ago.
They could, they could require everybody. I said, you could change it to require everybody.
Well, I'm thinking if you're building a new home, $140 to save you and the town, a big issue down the road is pre-cheap insurance.
I know, I had talked to the guys at OMA who does sewer. He says they did the claims because there's a lawyer that is turning this into a nuisance when a sewer backup happens. And the last one he worked, they paid out $250,000. They, they got that out of the insurance because of that. So...
You know, we need to amend this also.
Yeah, I think so too.
I hate to be tailing everything, but I think we need to have this to say that all new construction... Has to have this put in.
But it's not John this time. So like A would be all new construction and then two would be two or more reported.
That is correct.
Okay.
Can we just do that and then go ahead and vote on it? We have to rewrite this? Okay, we can do that.
I'm working this now.
Okay, go ahead.
You guys go ahead.
You get it.
We can fix that.
I got a car, but I got green ink this time for some reason.
Here, I can fix that too.
No, Bert doesn't need any pens.
That's full solution. Mike, can you get the right one?
Yeah. Well, there's no number. It's just...
Yeah, but that's not the right one. Is it? Yeah, you got it. Can you get this one? Here.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
It says D slash...
Yeah, I'm looking at the number. Thank you. And the number on it, so I'll just talk, but use the title.
Mr. Mayor, may we be excused?
Yes, absolutely.
Did anybody sign in before you leave?
But it's for business and stuff. Thank you.
I'll give you this one, I'll get a clean one.
Thanks for coming, Gus.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all first.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're old, we're not, we're not that old.
See ya.
Hi.
Thank you very much, Eric. See you tomorrow, I guess.
All right, Clip, we're going to do the emergency portion of it with another motion. Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the town ordinance requiring installation of a preventer valve, a backflow preventer valve under certain circumstances.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Okay. Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Uh, Clip?
Yes. She forgot my name. Hey, you.
You in the middle.
Well, there's four of us, there's no middle.
So what are those certain circumstances?
Thank you.
So are the certain circumstances in there?
In the, in really order.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if I...
Okay, we need to have a separate vote on the emergency clause. I'm going to say this so we can instate it now?
Yeah.
You got it? Yes. I make a motion to have this immediately into action.
I'll second that.
I need the word, emergency clause.
Yeah, emergency clause.
Does it prove the emergency clause?
I make a motion to approve the emergency clause for the preventer valve.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Clip?
Yes?
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
F, discuss with possible action to renew employee health, dental vision and life policies under 2024.
That's me.
This is, this is Pete Towne. He is our, he is our health, vision, dental rep.
Yes, I do.
Pete, be quick, we're not standing about to hurry.
Did you send them to me? I went ahead and-
I got you, I got you.
Everybody's packing them.
You too. It is, we're going to get you, right? His is a color.
So, yeah, thank you for the introduction. Thank you guys for having me out tonight. This, this is the, what you have in front of you is the 2024 employee benefits renewal. And, you know, for some reason, you guys have gotten some really, really good renewals over the last couple of years compared to most everybody else. If you remember last year, it was just a couple of points, I think it was actually less than two. You know, this year, we're looking at a very small increase, 2.85%, which is about thirty-nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars per year. And that's for everybody under the plan, all seventeen employees that are currently covered at the moment. I did, just so we can feel good about our pricing and our situation, I did get a quote with the other carriers. United Healthcare is the option that I showed on there. As you can see down there at the bottom, the pricing is about fifty percent more. That's not a typo, that is the price compared to what Blue Cross has on a similar plan. So, you know, what's available out there to you guys, we do have the best deal that we could get. You guys do offer an incredible plan for the employees. The benefit design with the five hundred dollar deductible, the total twelve hundred and fifty out-of-pocket plan is about as good of a plan as you're going to find anywhere. And so I think you guys should feel really, really good about that, what you're providing to the employees. Again, you're just not going to find something that's that, that's that rich out there. And just so some of you know what that means is, you know, the worst case that a, that a person could be out in one year is twelve hundred and fifty bucks. That's the most that a person could pay. So that's, that's kind of the medical situation. Any questions over, over that? The next, well, these plans are age rated, so the first page kind of gives the benefit breakdown, gives the overall premium. The next page just basically gives a list of, you know, the employees and what the pricing is currently, what it would be going to, and then what the United Healthcare quote is on there. So, you know, it's age rated, so everyone has a, has a rate based on their, based on The other really good news is the dental, which is with Delta Dental, the vision, which is with VSP, and then the town also pays for life insurance on every employee. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar benefit, and none of those rates changed. So the pricing, what's being paid today is the exact same in 2024, and it's also the same exact benefits. So there wasn't a change to, to anything related, related to that. So the only, you know, real change from 2023 to 2024, you know, is the 2.85% increase to the medical, to the medical plan.
Any questions?
Twenty thousand dollar death benefit's pretty good.
Well, I thought if you guys wanted to move to United, we could try, but, you know, it's-
Well, I'm just saying, a lot of employers provide a ten thousand dollar death benefit.
Yeah, no, in terms of the life insurance.
I think, yeah, for life insurance.
No, you're exactly right. I mean, that's, you know, the idea behind that is just to provide an initial death benefit to cover those costs. You know, that, that amount is, you know, more than what you probably would see out there, especially for, you know, your, your employee population, so. And by the way, just, just to note on that, there's also an A, B, and D benefit to that. So in the event that there's an accidental death, it actually would pay out fifty thousand to that, to that beneficiary for that person. So because there's two components to that, it's twenty-five thousand life and twenty-five thousand for the-
A, D, and D.
So.
I think it should relive. I'd get, I mean, our current plan, it's-
Hey, I just made the re-enrollment, this looks great.
Yes. You got that, Randy?
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve-
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
-employee health, dental, vision, and life insurance plans for 2024.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think one of the board members-
Oh, I'm sorry, David?
No, that's fine. I was just gonna, I was just gonna ping Tiffany and, and, to make sure we got a head nod from her on this.
Yes.
You good with it?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I was going to do.
Okay. Sorry. I jumped, I jumped.
Sorry.
It's okay, Randy, it's not a big deal.
So do I.
Hold it there.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
G is discussion of possible action on groundwork between the library and the fire department.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you, Lord. Tiffany and I looked at that yesterday, the, with the construction going on at the fire station. Part of the contract on the building is they're going to pour five tree, five feet, five foot, whatever, concrete apron around it. We've got the issue of that concrete drive that used to be the drive up when it was town hall.
Right.
And that drive-up window hasn't been used since town halls been down here.
Right.
We looked at that, and our recommendation, there's really no reason for that to be there. That doesn't need to be a drive-through. We could still have the parking behind the library for employee parking with no problem. And I think the best thing to do with that, we've got some bad asphalt in there that could be taken out and take that concrete drive out and grass that all the way back to the back of the new part of the fire station. I think that would look the best, and sorry, whoa, you're, you're the fireman on the board, what are you?
Yeah, I, I agree. With the new building and being so close and so tight in between the library, and I don't really know that we'll be able to utilize that drive much, and we take a chance of someone running into the new building, or the library for that matter.
Or the air conditioning and all that.
So, so I think, I think it'll look the best, and it'll also just keep, keep people from driving through there. I don't really know that it's necessary, like you said, don't use the drive-up window anymore for anything. There was a, there was a-
The return box was there, but it's been moved to the front of the building.
Yeah, so.
Which I think works better anyway, because they can pull through-
Pull through and just go through. Instead of coming behind the fire department.
Tiffany, have I missed anything that? We've also asked Tiffany to get some prices on the north side of concreting part of that drive, because they're going to have to, well, I guess they already did cut it for that water line, huh?
Yes.
And, but that asphalt's in horrible shape. Maybe go from the northwest end of the fire station up to that side, over the concrete to Fourth Street.
Do you think we ought to cut this cement and leave like a walkway between the two? Or just leave a grass area?
We could, the problem, I wish, I wish I'd taken some pictures, but the problem, if you come out the front door of the library-
Right.
And you come down the handicap ramp, that sidewalk down there runs into that drive, and that drive's about that much higher than the sidewalk. So if we at least got that out and poured to tie in-
Okay, right.
With that rest of it, and the, the new fire station portion will have a circle drive in front of it, where that would all kind of be on the same level.
Okay, that'd be good, yeah.
But I, I don't think it would hurt to take that entire, I mean, structurally, I'm not worried about the library, because it wasn't built with that drive there, so it's not tied to the building.
Okay.
It was poured later after that became town hall.
I didn't want it to disrupt the, you know, the concept, I mean, the structure of the-
Right, right, yeah.
But I didn't realize it was added on at a, at a different time. Then it, then it-
When it was a school.
How can you drop that door if the council was out in to that? Sorry, I was just thinking about that used to be a playground. I was thinking about the cement being laid there. Yeah, it used to be a playground. Dang it, boy.
Mm-hmm.
Are you guys, I'm sorry, Cliff.
Go ahead.
Are you guys thinking about trying to tack this on the current contract, or are you going to like use a, a local company to, to work, do the concrete work?
We-
It would be a separate, yeah.
Yeah.
Because their contract is done with county money.
Right, yeah, I understand that, yeah. Actually, part of the root cause of my question is, is to me, in my mind, it would be easier to, to get some of our local folks to take care of that, and quicker, probably cheaper, you know.
I'd like for somebody to be able to shoot that slope to make sure that, that grassy area drains.
Yes, sir.
Probably to the west, but I, I don't want to let shoot it.
Yeah, because I think there's a drainage issue with that currently.
Yeah.
The way it sits.
I'm sure.
So I think with us being able to take that out, putting grass in there would probably fix the drainage issue as well.
I think there's a drainage issue behind the, the library too, isn't there?
I don't know.
In that little parking area?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, when it rains, it puddles pretty big.
That's what I thought. Because when it ices, it's, it's a big chunk of ice.
Well, that parking lot's pretty tore up though, is it, Mom?
It's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah. The concrete part, you're talking straight east to water?
Where, where the library and Zim Park?
Well, they overlaid asphalt on top of the concrete, so therefore, only on part of it, so therefore, it will all slip towards the building, and then that's why it puddles right there, because the part that needs to be taken out is everything that has the asphalt overlay on it. And then I think the concrete will be-
Concrete doesn't work bad. It's the, all that broken up asphalt.
Yeah.
I'd like to also address that too, I mean, instead of just, you know, I know you want to take that out, but, you know, to do something with the back, maybe, with the back of the library?
Yeah, he has.
You know, kind of take, you know.
That's what, that's what we thought too when we looked at it.
We would probably quotes for that though, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
I would like to, you know, and, and yes, we are tabling a lot of stuff, but I think this gets you guys in the know, in the know, and you're able to come to me if you have any concerns, questions about it, but it allows me time to gather all the information, so we don't just dive into something and, and we kind of plan it.
Well, and here's kind of what I'm thinking too, Tiffany, and see what you guys think about it, that you might want to, on that north part, talk to the concrete contractor that's doing the, the part the county's paying for, it may be less expensive for them just to form up and keep right on going, and then it would tie, tie in with the rebar and, which you could get quotes from multiple people, and then decide which is the-
We, yes, I think we need to check both ways.
I think-
Because I don't know, because they are contracted by the general contractor, so therefore, the general contractor will tack on his percentage onto that also.
But if this is a separate project that's out, because this is outside the scope of that fashion.
I understand that, but they may not be able to, it's kind of like doing a side job for them.
They may not be able to work.
I mean-
There may be some, what's the-
Yeah.
Bonnie, can we, can the town take out that old drive?
We took out a piece of that.
Yeah, can you take it all, huh?
I said, we took out a piece of that old drive out, over there.
Right.
And it didn't have rebar in that drive, so I don't think it'd be a problem for us to go in there and take that out.
Yeah, so we could get it out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brian, you got a hammer on that excavator there?
We do have a brand new jackhammer, if we need it.
That's the only question I had. That'll fix it.
We didn't even need it when I took that piece out, I just grabbed a hold of it, pulled it, come right out.
Yeah. You've been pulling that concrete over there at the pavilion area?
Yes, I did do about ten hours worth of work in concrete over there.
And I'll tell you what, that looks really, really good over there.
And then when that fire showed up and did the great-
Great, they found some more concrete.
Yeah, there's pillars, there's already, the piers are already seen.
I knew the piers were, did they got metal one of them?
No, they have the metal there. The metal is there, but it's not-
I'll give you a report on citizens' comments.
Okay, good. Okay, so we are going to table the groundwork between the library and the fire department at this time. H, discussion with the town code revisions review on OV of the next sixty days.
Oh, it's probably supposed to be over my, uh-
Over, okay, over the next sixty days.
Over the next sixty days. Oh, okay. So, two of you guys have already got your G S R D.
Oh, my God.
I've got some homework.
Yeah.
You have yours. These are the, you have yours.
Lightning, I've got mine.
Um, these are the codes.
Hey, you said you like to read, right?
David's already had it. He's probably read through it a few times.
She, she hit me first.
Because he won it plenty of times, so.
And I do like to read.
And then-
Including legal stuff.
This is the stuff that they recommend, um, stuff that change. Then, do you have this?
I'm sorry?
Do you have this?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, but we have sixty days to respond back to them on any changes or anything like that, so we will have to have-
When did our sixty days start?
Last week.
So we're down to fifty days.
Yeah.
I was hoping you were saying when we approved this, we could just keep-
Well, they give us sixty days, they would like it done in sixty days, but I'm sure with the holidays and everything, they're going to give us a little bit more, so.
Who is they?
Um, American Legal Publishing.
It's due January second, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Says right there.
I'm sure that they would give us a little bit of a-
Is this because we redid it?
This is a codification of our ordinances.
Yeah, okay.
So any ordinance that we have approved since two thousand six, when the last codification was done, then they have went and put these, those ordinances into these.
Okay.
That is our list.
We have homework to do.
Yes. Did that assemble again? I, discussion with the possible action to approve resolution authority in OMAG to distribute escrow account funds in the amount of four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents.
Okay, yeah, it does.
I don't know what that's about.
Yeah.
In your packet, you have a letter from OMAG. They do like a tally at the end of, like, this is for twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, and that kind of give back what they don't, what we don't utilize, and so this is four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents that they distribute amongst their municipalities. And so this, we have to approve this ordinance, or this resolution, to tell them to apply that back into our policies or, or return it back to us.
Probably want to check, don't we?
Probably so.
Do we need a motion on that?
But it's not like we can just tell them to do this, they have to have a resolution.
If you can read this- If you can read this greenie. On this blue bag.
Not the greenie, don't worry about that.
No, I don't. Do we have, do we have?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a resolution number?
She cannot, Kate, we don't know where the minutes are from last month. That, because we approved the resolution, so she wasn't able to do the minutes and we don't have that resolution number, so.
Can I just leave that blank? I'm green right out. I have borrowed.
Go ahead.
They're all on my desk.
Okay, I move to approve resolution number to be filled in, uh, to accept O M A G. distribution of four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents.
I'll second, oh, go ahead Randy.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
She's going to have a connection. She'll be fine.
Number seven, new business, any matter not known.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We need a J, because we needed to pull down the.
Oh, that's true. We did pull that down, didn't we? We need a J. We're, we're pulling down the, um.
My, yeah, my question was just what?
Are the October person or?
October person or? Yeah. I'm glad you remembered because I.
So we've had.
Was there not any expenditures or do we just not have?
There was. There was phone bills and gas bills. That's the only thing that's paid afterward meeting. Everything else is paid at board meeting.
Okay.
But when she posted that, and I was supposed to get that today, and I totally missed that. Yeah, we're having some communication on what duties or who duties and like, yeah, it will be addressed.
Okay. But our utilities aren't paid?
Yes.
Not with you, no. I don't know how to get that.
So Tiffany, might this, might this be, uh, uh, one of those database update issues that we kind of sort of touched on this morning? Is that what caused this to be, is this number to be zero?
No.
Okay, right. That, that's all I need.
Okay, so we've all been used to the clerk being an employee and so they know how and everything, how to gather all of that information themselves, and they haven't had to rely on other people. And so we've got to get into the groove of the A P. person having to provide that information to the clerk.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. That's high. Yeah. Number seven of new business, any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of closing the general importance for section three, three, I'm sorry, three, one, one, nine, title twenty five O S. Okay, uh, number eight, citizens' comments, Jack.
Okay, the pavilion has arrived. Um, it was dropped by the trucker transport company at, um, Thurman, where they have volunteered to prep and paint it at no cost, about seven thousand dollars worth of donation. And as soon as the paint's dry, they will haul it over and we're still on track to get it erected before Thanksgiving.
Awesome.
So, um.
They're going to have to hurry.
Yeah, he's, well, uh, he said it'd just take a couple of days once they get everything on site. The piers have been poured, they're set, they're ready to go. Some other, all the roofing material has been dropped, you know, the gutters, everything's there. His equipment is there. He's just now waiting to get it painted.
What color are they painting it?
It's like a matte black with a, a, a galvanized roof.
Who did you say you was doing that, paint?
Thurman.
Okay, it's, okay, yeah.
Demetering, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
No comment about, no comment about asking color?
No, leave it alone. Oh, yeah, sorry, you should have gotten me earlier.
Never mind.
Why?
What color's the pavilion? What color is the pavilion?
Yes.
Long discussion about. I'll explain later.
Balls.
All right, sorry. Okay, thank you, Jack. Appreciate that.
Good job.
Councilperson report, David.
I have a few things. I will move very quickly through them. Richard, Richard contacted me to give me an update on the eleven lots. Tiffany, I have a reason for looking at you on this. Uh, he is currently working an appraisal on the property. Then he is going to be ready to transfer, after he gets the appraisal, he's going to be ready to transfer the property to the town. He told me to let everybody know tonight that as soon as the appraisal happens, he'll be contacting you and, and/or John Nguyen, or both of you as required to do, to work the property transfer.
Yeah, I think there's some legal things that needs to be done in order for him to get the best benefit too, and so.
Right, and that's actually, the appraisal process is actually part of what you just said. And, and that's the reason he's going to come at you guys after he gets that appraisal. He's not ready to see you yet. But he told me that he's going to personally make that a very high priority now because of all the time that, you know, has passed.
Yeah.
And, and he hadn't been able to get that work done, so. Okay, I was wondering, uh, do we have any updates that we can discuss here in this forum on the, uh, emergency event that happened at the water plant? Uh, my question would, some of my questions are.
Well, you got some of that on the agenda on the H U A.
H U A, okay.
And so maybe we can hold that off until the end of that.
Okay, very good, no problem. You may be getting ready to brief what I'm going to ask anyway, so. Okay, uh, last, the last regular meeting we had, we tabled an issue with Silver Construction on torn, uh, storm recovery. Do you guys remember that? Bert, you was actually questioning the legality of it. I was wondering if, wondering if we got any, is that still an open invoice or did we get a legal review done? Or has a decision been made to pay that or we? I guess, again, I'm not complaining about Kelly here, but I was kind of taking it for granted that that would be on the agenda again tonight, being we tabled it at our last meeting.
And I think that that's, you know, Kelly wasn't here, and I think we've got to come up with some processes to, I mean, maybe that, you know, the minutes and stuff are done like a couple of weeks after, so then we can refresh on exactly what needs to be on the agenda the next. I think there's just some processes that needs to be fixed on that because that.
Because I asked.
And I said, there is one, there is one thing that was tabled that we couldn't think of today, yesterday. And so, yeah.
Well, believe it or not, I wrote down here, can't remember also, I couldn't remember it either. Somebody said something in this meeting that remind jogged my memory and I can't remember what, I can't remember what that was. But I, I, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit uneasy about leaving them guys hanging out unpaid. Uh, the way I understand it, I understand you questioning.
And my main thing is, I want to make sure that the homeowner that was damaged is properly reimbursed for that damage.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I don't know if that needs to be a discussion between our insurance company and his insurance company.
Right, right. So, so, and again, that might even be something that you have to get John involved in, huh?
Could be. Tiffany, is that something you can?
I just, I'm recommending, I'm not trying to be the boss here, but I'm recommending that we at least move on.
We need to move, yeah.
Because those guys, in, in my opinion, and Cliff, you probably know more about it than I do. Uh, I think they responded in a hurry once they got a hold of them.
Yeah.
And they might be a valuable asset in the future if we need them again. And I sure would hate for them to hesitate to come back down here.
Yeah.
Okay.
As, as a bill that we owe.
Yes, sir.
But just the, the way it was done was not maybe.
And I'm not sure that, I, I don't think there's probably anything we can do about that.
Right.
My, my main concern is, was the damages.
Yeah, yeah, I remember you brought that up. I hadn't forgot that.
Yeah.
I, I didn't forget the whole thing, but I didn't forget that detail. And, uh, okay, so I'm going to move on here. Uh, Jack, are you still attending the library meetings?
There hasn't been one. The, uh, I believe, uh, Kevin was the president.
Kevin?
Um.
Hopkins.
Hopkins is the president. And we had two or three meetings and then it got down to him and I.
Right.
Were the only ones, and it has just lost all momentum and he hasn't called any new meetings since.
Okay, all right. Can I have that name again, please?
Uh, Kevin Hopkins.
Kevin, okay.
Can I give you his contact information later?
Yes, sir, I'll probably ask you for that as a reminder.
I think it's, it's time for another meeting and figure out, are we moving forward or what are we doing with this, so.
Okay, yeah, and I'd like to participate just as an observer, listener. Uh, same, same topic, library. Uh, uh, I've got a citizen complaint on auditorium, uh, water leaks. So, again, it wasn't very detailed. I, I, I need to, I need to engage some folks on the library team committee.
The last, I think the last communication I had, and I don't even know who I had it with, was that the board approved to fix the gutter on the back because the water runs down the building and into the basement and that kind of thing.
And that, that's a gutter repair on the back, right?
Yeah. Was that not that?
I don't know. Richard prompted me a couple of times on that and I don't know the status of that.
That was on the back of the auditorium portion of the building?
Yeah. The downspout has come off and there, the water just runs down the side of the building straight into the basement.
I don't remember, I don't remember, you guys don't go by, but I don't remember us approving anything on the gutters, did we?
It's been a while.
Yeah, we remember that.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah, y'all approved having it done.
Okay, so we, so we approved it, but it just didn't get done?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So we just didn't follow up on that?
Thanks for helping me remember.
Be back.
Tiffany, did you hear what we were just talking about?
Mm-hmm.
About the, we'd already approved the gutters and it just hadn't been done.
Okay, do you remember when?
I think it's about nine months ago.
I don't know. These guys, you remember.
It was one of the last meetings Richard was part of.
So March, April?
Yes.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Mm-hmm.
We keep loading your platter, don't we?
That's okay.
Uh, I'm going to move on.
Go ahead.
Uh, Tiffany, I, my next thing here is, and I, you know, I, I don't, I don't mean this as an ambush. I was just hoping we could get a little bit of an update on the, the state audit. Uh, I know they came in and notified you that they were starting an audit and then they requested some information and you guys gave it to them. And then now they've kind of sort of gone away.
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering if they've requested any more information other than the initial hit when they first introduced themselves.
Um, they called me, did they call me or you called me?
They called.
They called. He called me Wednesday and he has requested, uh, direct deposit registers so that they could tie them to the bank statements. Um, and so from twenty twenty to twen, till September, they've asked for direct deposit registers, so. And W two's, so.
W two's?
Yes.
Payroll data, huh?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I'll probably, you know, again, I'm not trying to ambush you here. I'll probably ask that question from now, monthly.
If you want me to, I'll just put it in my report.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Just tell you if I haven't heard from them or what they.
If that's the way you want to do it, because I was planning on, if you didn't want to do it that way, I was going to ask every month anyway. I won't ask at special meetings unless you want to tell us stuff. Uh, and I wanted to talk just for a minute about the training workshop that we talked about this morning. Uh, Cliff, you remember?
Yes.
What we were talking about. Uh, Bert, Randy, uh, I talked, uh, I had a situat, a situational awareness this morning while we were talking to Angel about the banking stuff. Uh, Shelley and Tiffany were targets of opportunity after our banking meeting was over. And I discussed with them, uh, the possibility of setting up a couple of, uh, non-meeting type training seminars for me and any other board member that wants to attend. And I realize that we can only do that two people at a time. But what, but what I'm talking about is, I'm talking about a workshop type format. Tiffany, talk over me if you need to.
Okay, can I, can I time you in real quick?
Go ahead.
We can do more than two. We just have to post it as a workshop.
Yeah.
And kind of what will be going over.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, here's my purpose. You guys have heard this before and Tiffany has to. I want to look at that, Bert, you were with me on some of the, uh, financial database stuff that I wanted to see. I, I want to get, now, we've got Tiffany back on board with us. She's a C I C. expert, database expert. And I want, I want to get her to do a show and tell on the database for me and for us, if you guys are going to be there. I'm not saying that I want you there. I'm just saying that I want to make it available to you if you want to be there. Because, uh, but anyway, I, I want to get Tiffany to check me out on the data, the database, how it works. In an effort to, for me to more better understand what the data is and how it's compiled and how I can make it easy on town hall to give me the information that I'm looking for on finances in a positive manner, not a negative manner. Does that make sense to you? And, and Tiffany even told me again this mor, morning, and she had told me this before, that the way that database works is you can actually build reports. You can make your own report inputs. Again, Tiffany, cut me off if you need to. And you, you build the reports. And, and then when you pull the data, it's pulled specifically to what you're looking for and you don't get a bunch of other data that you're not looking for. Does that, does that make sense? So I'm going to ask her, and I realize she's real busy, uh, but I'm going to ask her to cut out an, an hour or two, maybe once a month. Uh, and hopefully within a couple of weeks, we could start.
Well, I would like to start the workshops with those.
Very good.
And then I, I don't know how, I mean, I need to get everyone to see when, you know, times and different things like that. But to get those books done and then we'll continue on with that, if that's okay.
All right, well, I'm okay with that. I was hoping that we could start the financial stuff a little bit quicker than that, but I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And what I'm hearing you say is probably January or something. Okay, I'm okay with that.
Can I ask something?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see some, uh, a workshop maybe that we could do when we have a big item come up like our C D B. grant, so we can sit down and talk and visit and make sure that we're understanding each other, what we have on those things too. Because it's hard to be in a meeting and not be able to talk and say, hey, well, what are we doing here? I don't feel that we can all express our opinions in that shorter period of time. So I would like to see sometimes maybe when we have something big to, to, to stop and discuss before we have our.
It would still be an open meeting though.
Yes, it'd still be an open meeting.
Yeah.
Could be a planning meeting.
A planning meeting, yes, I like that.
Enid, I was going to, after we talked this morning, I'm going to get ahold of Enid. Enid does a workshop before their meeting every month. So to figure out exactly how they utilize that workshop. And so to me, like, we could start at, with the workshop at five or even move the meeting back to seven if we need to and do the workshop at six. But start the workshop at five, go till six with the workshop and then start the meeting.
Then the, the meeting should go quicker and smoother, I would think.
Right. But then we'd also be able to express more, I'm not saying that we can't express out here, but, you know. I have an idea, you have an idea, Randy has an idea, and maybe if we can put those three ideas together, make a better mash. And I'm not trying to leave you out there also.
It's okay, yeah. You guys will get my total cooperation on that.
But, yeah.
You will too.
And I can only think that's going to be the betterment for Hennessy is what we want to do, and that's my number one thing is I, I want to better Hennessy.
Something, something that I decided to not talk about tonight in this councilperson's report is I wanted to talk about read aheads.
I don't know.
Read ahead.
Read aheads, stuff that.
I thought you said red.
Well, we can talk about red heads if you want to. Might not go over well in the newspaper.
Might not go over well with your wife.
Especially, that's my point.
Remind either.
When my son reads it, I'm in trouble. What I, what I was gonna say about read-a-heads is, is, uh, again, I'm, I'm pulling the other town trick on you, Tiffany. I, I talked to some other towns about, and just tonight's an example, and I'm not complaining, but we got a load of data here. We got a load of stuff, you know, and we got it. Kelly made the deadline last night. You know, you know what I'm saying? But there might be stuff in here that I want to come into Town Hall and research, look at records that are on file or I might want to research in the Oklahoma statutes, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I could go on and on and on here. But, uh, some of the other towns that I've talked to about their meeting agendas and their, their associated documentation, they put their stuff out days ahead of their meeting, even with the deadline pending, okay? So, yeah, if, if we, if we send this stuff out four days, four business days was the main thing that I caught from some other towns that I asked about, or asked about this.
Four business days?
Yeah, four business days, yeah. And, uh, that would be very, very helpful to me. But at the same time, I'm not saying that.
I got the school agenda today.
I'm not saying they would be locked in. I'm saying that we could, they could be changed up to the deadline.
Today?
You, you see where I'm going?
I don't remember if I got it.
So, Jack, I got a question for you. When's the board meeting coming up?
Uh, next Monday night.
Next Monday night and today is Thursday.
Tuesday night.
So they got it out?
Three days.
Three days.
Yeah.
They don't usually. Usually they get it out on a Friday.
Usually they get it on Friday and you have meetings on Friday. And that's the thing, when we moved our meeting from a Monday, that shortened you guys' time to get the data.
Right.
Because we would give it out on Friday and then you would have all weekend to digest it and then we would meet on Monday.
Well, again, I'm not demanding. I'm just throwing ideas out. You, you know what I'm saying? Uh, I, I could do a much better job as a board member if I had more time to soak this stuff up.
And if I get it, that's why I sent out the ordinances as soon as I got them, I sent out the ordinances, because those were definitely gonna be.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I read them. I, I, I was sitting here tonight. I didn't have to read them. I didn't, I didn't want to present them, so I was very happy with that.
I was up at 4:00 AM for some crazy reason this morning. So I opened my laptop and was looking at all the stuff Kelly had sent. And I was thinking, it would maybe even be nice if each of us had a notebook computer to sit here instead of to, where these ordinances, we could pull them out, read them on that, maybe even type our motions that would go to the printer or something rather than the cards. And then there would be a, a good paper trail.
This, these are.
I have a question on that.
Other towns don't use these.
Yeah, I'm not kidding. I know.
I don't know how they do it.
They write what they say.
Okay, alright, wait a minute. I do know how they do it. They use a digital voice recorder.
Right, exactly. We used to do that.
Yeah.
We're recording already anyway, why don't we do that?
What's Kingfisher using? Theirs is entirely digital and all accounts on their computers.
Yeah.
I, okay, I don't know if they went to, but when we went to the OML conference, the School Board Association was there broadcasting their system. And I know they've got a pretty good system just from, from David, you know, where that's what they use, is they use a.
Right.
A laptop in front of them and they're able to click on the attachments. It's, and it keeps everything. And so, to me, that may be something that I need to investigate more is.
See, in Kingfisher, they've got a monitor like this and you see that the, the agenda's on the monitor. And as it goes down, it ticks down and even as the clerk puts in who voted, it checks off their name. And then if they have a, a document, it comes up on the screen and so everybody can see it, that kind of thing, so it's.
Just like, just like tonight, Bert and Randy were talking about the, the grass and the concrete around the new fire building. I would have liked to seen that there.
Yes, absolutely.
Your, your, your citizen complaint on the driveway damage from the storm recovery. I'd like to have seen that right here. Uh, I could go on and on and on, on that, you know.
I think for sure.
Tiffany did a great job with, with me on the, uh, water bill presentation. I got a whole bunch of, uh, very positive comments on that, by the way, on you, not me. So I, I wanted to say thanks.
I did too.
For tonight.
And I did too.
I wanted to tell you thanks tonight in front of the camera. I appreciate you helping with that, doing that. So, uh, this thing right here is, is worth its weight in gold, in my opinion. Again, I'm falling back on my DOD days and my military days. This right here is the key to our success and what you just said about.
I'd like to even see us be able to do that.
Well, see, that's another thing.
Monitor right back there over the fireplace.
Yes, sir.
Where we could see it and the public could see maybe Mount One up here.
Yeah.
And like, just today, we didn't have something that we could have pulled up right there. And we wouldn't have had to worry about where, well, who where it went, stuff like that. We could use that.
That's, yeah.
And then when I forget something, like, when did we do the gutter thing? Or when did we approve the, the building of the pavilion?
If, if you guys remember, you know, and I'm not bragging on myself here at all. I'm bragging on Tiffany and, and Shelley and, and Kelly about keeping our records. You remember, I've, I've, I've talked to everybody about, uh, IT advancements, you know? And actually, that was one of my contract inputs on a recent contract that we were working, if you guys remember. Talking about modernizing our IT equipment and modernizing, uh, expanding IT capabilities throughout Town Hall. And I think we need to fund that kind of stuff. I really do. And I think that lady right there has the knowledge and capability and knows how to get it done. And, uh, I think we need to leverage Tiffany's skills in that CIC database. And, and, and we need to make this thing, uh, uh, really, really good. And, and I have tons and tons of ideas and I know Randy does too, working for ONG. And what I'm talking about here specifically is a shared drive. Just like Cliff said, tonight, if we had that, those minutes from last month in the shared drive, all we would have had to do is click, click, click and we'd have had a lot up here in front of our faces. Okay?
I'd have to have some of the.
Can we use, can we, in, in fact, can we do like a, um, what is it? Microsoft play? Is it Microsoft or something, 365 or something where you can share?
SharePoint.
It's just SharePoint?
Microsoft does SharePoint. There's several different.
And there's also Google Drive. Maybe that's another one I'm thinking of. Because I know that that's how, when I went to CIC for my sixth month, um, that's how we had everything.
Yeah.
All of our training documents.
Yeah.
Everything was on the shared drive.
Uh, if you guys remember, uh, again, I'm not trying to put, put light on myself. Of the building I worked in, a tinker. There was 10,000 people in that building, okay? How did we share information? You, you couldn't distribute it fast enough. It, the only way you could distribute it was on a shared drive. And you got, you got digital documents and they go on a digital file folder on the shared drive. And you give the people that need that information access to that file folder. And the people that don't need that information don't get access to that file folder. They can see it there, but they can't open it. Example that we would use that for would be certain personnel records would need to be secured. Make sense?
I'm, I'm not, I'm a literate on, on IT stuff. So is this like a, just a, a notebook or?
So, it's, it's basically, it's a, it's a network. It's a network thing. It's a common network where you have all your files and everyone that, that needs access can have access. It could also be web-based.
But what is the tool that you have? I mean, what is, I mean, actually, it's on a laptop. It's a.
Well, so, for, for example, we have, at the company I work for, we have both. We have it on a, on a network or on a, um, we, we have one that's, that's internet-based, that's basically a website. And it's a shared drive that we can go on. And it doesn't matter what computer, as long as we have the credentials, we can log into it.
Yeah.
And then we also have our, um, our actual, um, trying to think what I'm looking for here, but anyway, um, uh, basically a, a, a network or, or a way to log into a separate computer that we have separate drives for that we can log into as well.
Okay, if we had like a laptop computer, it would be, everything on there would be subject to.
Yes.
Everybody. So we'd have to have a separate.
Yeah, actually, Cliff, to, to simplify it, everything, nothing would actually be on the laptop.
Right.
You would come in here, log into the network in here or at home and you would get your information from a server.
Okay, so there's not anything on there?
So if you lost your laptop, yeah, if you lost your laptop, who cares?
Yeah, there's nothing on the laptop.
It's a dummy laptop with nothing on it. It's just a portal.
The servers that we're looking for.
What, what secures it is your password.
Okay.
If you guys, if you guys remember back, a few months back, I was talking to you about showing you some stuff on, on the big screen. The Crescent has a shared drive and I mentioned Kingfisher. Uh, Tiffany, you were working for CIC at the time. Something happened on the night that I had planned to, to show those, you know, I was gonna show everybody what we're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Something happened, Barb. I, I, again, I can't remember what happened. But I didn't put it on the agenda because I was gonna do it on, in my, uh, council person's report area. And it was just gonna be a real quick, hey, here's the Crescent Town website. Here's how Ryan has got his shared drive set up. Here's his folders, you know. It's, and to make it even simpler than what Jack was telling you, it's, it's a file cabinet. You open the file cabinet and you look in and you look, you got Manila file folders in there, right? And you look in there and, and each file folder is titled. And even on the computer, the little folders are, they even actually look like a file folder. So, you're gonna feel right at home as soon as you sit down and look at it. You've used the old metal filing cabinets at you.
Right, yes.
On your business records. Take you, take you three minutes to learn how to, to look at it and use it. I know Bert uses it down in his business.
And we use it at school, everything.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, every student has a Chromebook and I've got, I've got a notebook at my desk and.
Yeah.
That's how they test, that's how I grade, that's everything.
Anyway, I didn't mean to drag that out. I'm, I'm willing to help you guys. I, I'll work with you. Uh, Tiffany, if you want me to show Cliff what I'm talking about, we could turn this thing on. Me and Cliff could come up here, spend a few minutes. I could show him the Crescent City Hall website. Kingfisher's got the same thing. Guthrie has a great big deal on the internet that you can look at. And that, that's things that they want the public to see. An example would be ordinances. Uh, uh, what else? What else?
I'd like, I'd rather have that on my deal and I'd do that instead, happily.
Yeah, but the, the final approved copies that are.
Right.
That are coded into law, we could put them on the internet for people to see.
And we plan on doing that. That's part of the contract that we had with them is that we will get a digital.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Good. So you could put, to save you guys from people coming, I wanted a copy of this or that. Well, you could have a little computer in that front office. It, in a minute, you show them how to find it and they go do that kind of thing.
I mean, there'd be some stuff that we can't put on there.
Right.
I mean, but I think we've put a lot more on the website than we've ever had in the past. I mean, Angie's been really good about putting stuff on there. You know, anytime we ask her to do something, she puts it up there.
Can you not search, like, the minutes you're asking when that was? Can you not search that?
Well, we've had problems with, I think, like, minutes getting to Angie to where she could put the minutes on there.
But you all don't have the minutes just on a computer so that you could go and search for television show or whatever it was that you wanted to know?
They're not all on one computer.
We need to do that, too. I mean, that would make your life a lot easier.
I know.
When you're searching for stuff they're talking about. We did this 10 years ago, you know?
We needed to put that at the, on that next agenda to get things up here so we can do that, I think. I think that would be a really.
I'd love it.
I agree. You know, and you guys have heard me use this word also, modernization. I, I, I know, you know, I know, I knew I was gonna get, I knew I was gonna get there. We, we need to modernize, uh, a little bit anyway. And, so, I'm getting, I need to hush, I guess.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need to.
No, no, I was just gonna say, honestly, I think if you guys all had your little laptops up here and could see the items that were attached to your email versus copies.
Oh, yeah.
I think you'd find that we would probably save some money here at Town Hall because.
That's a lot of.
I kill a lot of trees.
You guys are gonna leave and all of that stuff's gonna be sitting right there and it's just gonna go in the shredder box.
You're right, you're right. Because last night, when I was sitting there and I was, I looked at these ordinances, I looked at the agendas, I looked at the pictures of the wellhouses, all of that stuff, and I'm thinking, man, it would be nice to sit in that meeting and just pull this up. And we could, that could be sent. We could take our notebooks home with us. That data be sent to them and then bring it up here and.
Well, not only that, like.
And stuff could be put on, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but stuff could be put on as it comes up, like Dave was saying. When you got those ordinances, those could already go out to where we would have a lot of time to review.
And that's just like with them, like, Bony and some of the stuff being Bony stuff, some of it being Alyssa stuff, they can be responsible for, to, to be uploading it into their, themselves too.
Yeah, exactly. We, and we could have a Troy folder, a Bony folder, an Alyssa folder. We could have photos, letters, you know, we, I'm talking about subfolders. Digital photos in the technical world, digital photos are a lifesaver. And I'm surprised, I'll be honest with you, Bert, I, I, from, from my technical background, I'm surprised that, you know, OMA, you've taught me some lessons about OMA and I appreciate it. I'm surprised that they don't require us to have a lot more, uh, digital photography available in case they need it. But that, that's just a side thought there. And I'll talk about, about that in our next agenda here.
So, you're done?
I've got, yes, sir, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes, sir. I, I appreciate everybody listening to me, okay? I'll say that also.
Randy?
I gotta do two minutes.
I think I'm good.
Bert?
Yeah, I, um, in some of the data that we, that we got, the letters and things, we had a legal opinion from our town attorney concerning uh, compensation for a bill of office holding, namely, fire department personnel serving on the town board.
Right.
And I got to thinking about that because he recommended we have an ordinance covering that issue. And I got to thinking about it at 4:00 this morning. I went on the fire department in 1978. I ran for the town board in, I'm sorry, nine, yeah, 78. I ran for the town board in 1979 and I contacted the town attorney at that time and got the exact same legal opinion we just got from John Nguyen. And this comes up from time to time. And, um, I have researched it through attorney, attorney general opinions and we, it's been cleared through our accountants, our auditors and all of that. I would like to, uh, put on the next agenda, Kelly, to have a, to discuss having that added to our town ordinances. Um, we're talking about firefighter run pay if you're on the town board and we got a legal opinion. And what I was saying, when I went, ran for the town board the first time in 1979, I talked to our town attorney, who was Frida, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
And got the same opinion that he just gave us. And he recommended that that be added to ordinance. I think that would, I just think that will clean that up. And so I'd like to put that discussion on for the next, next meeting. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Um, just to add something to that, Tiffany and I had talked about that before she actually went out for the, uh, attorney's opinion. There were accusations floating around town that I was taking money. I'm part of the fire department, that I was still taking around money. And, uh, and as long, along with my board, um, compensation. And, uh, that's not the case.
It's not really compensation. It's not that much money.
No, it's not. It's not. But I want, I want, I want to make sure and that is clear that from the time I was sworn in to currently, until we've gotten that opinion, there, I have not taken any money. And, um, I know the accusations floated around town. It's been brought back to me. Um, so just to make that clear that, uh, that nothing, nothing had happened, noth- nothing like that has been, has happened since, uh, since I was sworn in.
So what is the opinion? You can do both?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So you tell me you're taking the money now?
No, it's not. It's not.
We just got the opinion two, two
Two, a couple of days ago.
But you should start, because that's a different job.
I'm going to leave that into the opinion of other people. I don't think that's my, I don't think I can say whether or not I should. As a board member, I don't feel like it's my place to say, yes, I need to be paid for that. That's, that's Tiffany's position and I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow that between Tiffany and the fire chief. So that's their opinion.
So I support it. If anybody's interested in my opinion, I would support that.
It's, it's basically, it's reimbursement, but it's kind of a blanket.
I'll change some of the fire checks, they're not gonna get rich. Just saying.
Okay, sorry.
That's all I had, Cliff.
Okay.
Thank you. That was the best councilperson's report we've had. Number ten, I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, we have Hennessy Utilities Authority Board of Trustees regular meeting, November ninth, twenty twenty-three, Town Hall Council Room. Call to order, roll call, please.
Okay, Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here. I was telling Boney I had to.
Dave?
Here. Getting windy.
It is.
Number two, consider approval of consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the meeting. Again, we don't have those at this time. B, approval of claims as follows, October first, orders is zero. Again, we don't have them at this time. Number two, November purchase orders, one hundred and six thousand five seventy-four oh seven. November meter deposit refund is zero. I make a motion to the consent, approval of the consent agenda with the meeting and the October purchase orders coming as follows.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Number three, citizen comments. Number four, other scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject and/or take action on the following. A, discussion with a possible action to approve the reworking of the CDs and possibly moving to a different institution for better rates.
I make a motion to approve working with Interbank for CDs and/or money market accounts.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
B, discussion with a possible action to approve the holiday bonuses for employees. We are tabling this at this time. C is discuss with a possible action to renew employee health, dental vision and life policies for twenty twenty-four.
I move that we renew our health, dental and vision and life policies for twenty twenty-four without changes.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Discussion with a possible action to approve the purchase of security cameras on the system at the water treatment plant. You'll find that in your packet.
I got the motion on that.
Okay.
And if you guys wanna see what kind of product we're getting, they have installed five of the eight cameras in Town Hall. And we have a big monitor up there in the by the window. Yeah, by the drive-through window. And so
Southeast corner.
It's really, I mean, the cameras are really good. And we have a couple of them that are voice, shows voice, like, inside Town Hall. And then we're gonna do voice in here, too, so.
I guess that's the camera there?
Yes.
I didn't sense what it's sound.
I move to approve purchase of a security camera system at the water treatment plant.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes. E, discussion with a possible action to approve the purchase of a trench box for safety purposes.
So after that, the accident or the emergency out of the water plant where they got, they thought that they would be able to dig further away from the leak and it wouldn't cave in on them. And we had the two employees that kinda got trapped. We, I told them, we have to get one of these trench boxes, we, you know, for the safety of our employees. I'm also working on a policy so that even if it's gonna be, even with this, if it still looks like it's gonna be any danger, like certain depth or certain, you know, things like that, that it would be automatically contracted out, that we would not put our employees into that situation. So, and then we'll also tell them this policy, like, when they have to have these trench boxes, like, certain depth, certain, you know, different things, so.
What about a training program, Tiffany?
I'm looking for one for, for that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't suppose any of the VOTECs offer anything of that nature. If we purchase these trench boxes from this company, they will do the training with us when they bring them to us.
As far as, like, training to, like
This is just putting them together, how to use the trench boxes.
But we need, like, training for those employees on the safety and everything of getting down in the hole, also.
Tiffany, auto check with Autry, cause they have a heavy equipment training thing. And that talks about terracing and proper
Good benching and
Yeah, grades that they can slope in and how to dig the hole properly and that kind of thing.
That'd be awesome. I don't see the cost of this.
It's, it's this page. There's, actually, we have a quote from two places, United Reynolds and Ozark.
Okay, okay, let me get onto Reynolds, Bert.
And the Ozark one, we don't pay taxes, so it's just the fourteen seven eleven.
Tiffany, what you're trying to do is get ahead of the curve by making the purchase now?
Yes.
And, and, and like Bert was asking, come up with some, some kind of formal training program that we need to send our people to for trenching certification. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess what I'm, here's, again, one thing that I feel a little uneasy about, and I'm glad you're sitting here, Brian. I'm worried about us getting this trencher, getting this trenching protection, protective box. And then our folks trying to use it before they're ready to. Does that make sense?
I, yes, it does.
That would really, really bother me if that happened.
But I would hope, but if they're gonna dig a hole, I would much rather them, cause DEQ sets standards. Now, does everybody go by what DEQ says that this, it has to be done this way? No, they don't. And so I think it's
OSHA's five foot. OSHA's five foot. Anything over five foot, you gotta have a trench box. DEQ standard's four foot. Anything over four foot, you gotta have a trench box. It doesn't matter what kind of soil it is.
So my thing is, let's get this so that we can start requiring the requirements done by DEQ and OSHA. But we're gonna work on the policy, too.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. I'm not, I'm not trying to say that I don't wanna, I don't wanna vote for this, to purchase this box. I do. And I'll vote for it tonight. I'm just, I'm just a little, again, I'm a little uneasy with our people trying to use it before they know how to.
But I would much rather them use, I mean, cause the company's gonna come in and show them how to set up the box and a hole and different things like that. So they will get trained. But as far as, I would much rather them have that there than digging a hole and they get down there and it's like, they end up going past four foot or past five foot.
Yeah.
And then something happens.
Okay, so here's what my ears heard, I think you say, and you really didn't say all of this. You're probably gonna let the company do that training that you mentioned. And you're probably gonna document that in their personnel records as the supervising manager. So we would have training documented that the company did. Am I right, Brian?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, I, you know, I wanna vote for this.
And then the formal training would be on.
But then I want, also
The formal training would come later.
Correct.
Then we would go find other training on digging a trench, benching, sloping the proper way.
I'm with you.
Yes.
Okay.
You could go to any town and nobody follows.
Okay, and this is the area of the agenda where you guys kinda wanted me to wait about my, talking about the update on the, on the accident?
The what?
Remember, I, I wanted to, I asked you about if we had any updates on the emergency event at the water plant. To be honest with you, if it's not, how's Kyle? Can you answer that in this meeting?
No, we cannot.
Okay, all right.
That's HIPAA.
Yeah. I didn't think you could, and I'm okay with that. So let me ask you this. Reporting on the event, did, did we meet all the, Bert has told me that OSHA doesn't apply to us, Oklahoma Department of Labor. So are there reporting requirements in that Oklahoma Department of Labor?
We do that once a year. We report them all, but we take the reports as they come.
Okay, so we didn't, we weren't required to send in a specific report on this specific accident?
We did it through our workers' comp.
Okay, all right, okay. So, so I guess what I'm saying then is you feel like we've met all reporting requirements?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good. And I haven't talked to Kyle lately, but I will. See how he's doing.
I have Pop coming.
Okay, how's he doing?
Uh, we can't say.
Can't talk about it? Later.
On this, this one here says alter light and alter save on this one. And this one, I don't know if this is
We, we proposed the Ozark one. So if you'll turn the paper over, no, like, you're right there.
Okay.
This is basically what we would get.
Right.
Would be two of these boxes. So we can go four foot or eight foot deep, cause they will stack on each other. Or we can go four foot deep, what is it, six, twelve foot long, or however long they are.
Okay.
Ten feet long.
Or they might be five foot.
Yeah, they're five foot.
So we can ten foot.
Ten foot.
Four by ten?
Yeah. So we can either go four by ten or eight foot deep and that's it.
Okay, then I have a second question. After we buy this one, can we add to this?
You can add to these. I don't know how many you can stack on. I know that you can do three.
You can do three?
Yes.
Okay. I like that. I like to be able to, you know.
We can add to it if we need to later on.
Right. But sometimes you're getting a bigger hole. That hole over there on Third Street, that was a big hole. Was it Third Street?
Over by fingers.
Yes.
Yes. That we called contractors.
That was on the top.
Cause it was about seventeen, fifteen to seventeen foot deep.
Right.
And I was like, you're done, we're outta here.
Absolutely. Hey, I was gonna say, I also agree with what Tiffany said earlier, at a certain level, we need contracts.
Right, yes.
I would totally agree with that. You know, and I would, I personally would rely on Brian and/or Alyssa and you to make that call. I would support, I would support you guys in those efforts. And I think my colleagues would also.
Yes, definitely.
Absolutely.
I would myself like to see ten foot limit for us. If it's over ten foot deep, we, we're out.
I agree. We need to keep everybody safe.
Yeah.
Because those people, they do it for a living and they have the stuff, the equipment.
Yes. And what got us in trouble out here is we couldn't keep up with the water that was coming out of the pipe after they cut it. And we had two pumps going, so.
I make a motion to purchase the shoring equipment from Ozark for fourteen thousand seven hundred eleven dollars and forty cents.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Discussion with a possible action to approve repair of wellhouses four, five and six. You'll see pictures in your packet about
Those three wellhouses are in very poor shape.
I have a question, Tiffany. These windows that are boarded up, and I saw on here that the quote called for replacing windows. Do we need windows in those? Cause to me, that's something that can just get broke out. I think it's the DEQ thing. Is it for ventilation or something?
Okay. Well, that answers that.
Cause if we have to bypass the plant and go in there and have to run chlorine to straighten the well coming to town, it'd have to be ventilated somehow. I think that is a DEQ thing. I wish Alyssa, I wish Alyssa was here, cause she's
She's on vacation.
She's on vacation. She kinda knows more about the water stuff than I do.
Cliff, you can hand me a card.
I'm sorry?
Yep, I'll do. Any questions? I don't wanna jump the gun again and make a motion. I'm, I'm good. Okay. I make a motion to approve the repair of wellhouses four, five and six for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes. New business. Any matter not known or which could not have been foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda according to section three one one dash nine, titled two five O S. Says the comments. Councilperson report. Randy?
I don't have anything.
Nothing, sir.
Do you wanna make a little report about how they're doing out there at the cemetery for the pavilion that's going on?
No, because I just
Sorry.
And let me tell you why. I went to the cemetery today and noticed that there was concrete poured now that I didn't know about. I'm glad there's progress being made.
I went after today and there was cement poured. I talked to the cement pump, there's level out the dirt and I wasn't expecting you to say no. You blew me away. You blew me away.
Which I guess this project has been in the making for a long time. And so when I gave Keith the go-ahead, he like went fast.
Yeah, because, yeah, I I wasn't trying to be funny, but I really don't know anything about me. I went out there on my wall, there's a floor now and pipes sticking out, it looks great.
It looks great. And they said that Keith is going to start building on it. He didn't say exactly when, but doing that, so that's that's getting taken care of.
Awesome, that's going to really be a great improvement.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cliff?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.